Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Dr. Rod.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Present.
Mr. Brenna Ventura.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me go on to, well, first of all, let me wish everybody a good evening and thank you for coming to our regular meeting of the City Council. And let me just make the general announcement. For those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda, please complete a speaker card as early as possible during the meeting and submit it to a staff member. First up, we have some presentations. Let me start first with the health impacts of cannabis on the youth. And we have Stella Chow from San Mateo County Health, Danielle Go from Japanese Community Youth Council, Mark Karandang, Northern California, high intensity drug trafficking area. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Stella. I'm from Alcohol and Other Drugs, the San Mateo County Health System. With me I have Danielle Go. She's from the Japanese Community Youth Council, and she works on youth development programs.
Can you hear the microphone?
Can you hear me? No. Is this working?
I don't think it's.
Does this come out of the?
Just speak up.
Does this work?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just stand like this. Okay, so Mark isn't, Mark isn't here with us today, but if you would like any data on DUI rates, ER visits, poisoning data on what's happened in other states that have legalized recreational use marijuana, please let us know. So on the agenda today is the health impacts of cannabis use on youth, local use data for youth equity, local businesses versus large corporations, youth protections, advertising and buffer zones, vaping and THC. So from this slide, you, we in the prevention world are concerned with cannabis use with youth because the average rates for THC and CBD levels have been increasing exponentially from the 1960s to 2015, when this graph, I'm sure it's more updated now. But the levels have been rising for THC over the years by very, very many, you know, exponential rates. And it's concerning to us because it's not the same cannabis that was used in the early For THC, this is the mind altering chemical which affects a person's pleasure, memory, coordination and concentration. And it's what's usually found in recreational use cannabis products at a higher rate, while CBD is the non-psychoactive cannabinoid, which is usually more found in medical cannabis. And we're especially concerned with youth because research suggests that cannabis use during adolescence results in an impairment of areas of the brain which affect learning, long-term memory, a lowering of IQ, impaired verbal, cognitive and attention performance when compared to non-users. And daily cannabis users before the age of 17 had odds of high school degree attainment at a rate of 62% lower than those who had never used cannabis before. The adolescent brain really continues to develop up to the age of 25, and we're trying to put in protections in place for youth to, you know, protect that time for their brains to grow. Yeah. So in 2017 to 2018, Jefferson Union High School District administered a California Healthy Kids Survey. In the report, it stated that in traditional schools, 13% of youth used cannabis within a 30-day period. And when it comes to non-traditional schools, 44% of youth had used cannabis in a 30-day period. So with that being said, Jefferson Union High School District has the highest rate of use out of all the non-traditional schools in the San Mateo County. So when you're considering opening up cannabis businesses, please take into consideration that you have varying rates of use and different risk factors for youth in different schools, in different communities. So for outcomes for youth using substances, we're showing some youth substance abuse treatment data for youth entering treatment for cannabis use. So I'm just going to talk about the right side, the bar graph. The bar graph on the right shows from 2015, youth who are entering treatment for cannabis, the highest, at the highest number were 12- to 14-year-olds, followed closely by 15- to 17-year-olds. This is a very young age to be going into youth treatment. And one of the main tenets of substance abuse prevention is to try and delay the onset of use for youth of any harmful substance, because data shows that nine out of 10 adults who have a substance use disorder started using before the age of 21-years of age. So from a San Francisco Public Health Department report on the health impacts of cannabis dispensaries, medical cannabis dispensaries opening in San Francisco, they reported some disproportionate impacts on different communities in regards to the location of medical dispensaries. They said that the density of alcohol and tobacco retailers has been found to disproportionately impact low-income communities and communities of color. And increasing evidence suggests that medical cannabis dispensaries and adult-use retailers could have similar impacts. Number two, in regards to youths, youth use rates, different ethnic groups have varying use rates for different substances. In San Mateo County, Jefferson Union High School District, 2015 California Healthy Kids Survey data showed that the alcohol and other drug use rate, the 30-day use rate for youth was 47% for African-American youth, which is the highest in San Mateo County, 38% for Hispanic-Latino youth, 31% for Caucasian youth. And these are actually all the very high rates of use in these ethnic populations in San Mateo County across the board. Some recommendations that this report had was to enact density restrictions for retailers, evaluate processes for onsite consumption, delivery, accessory use with an eye for social and health impacts, conduct preventative outreach and education, and consider the community factors such as low-income density, substance use rates, when you're considering zoning processes. Some of the health outcomes that this report also stated were between 2010 and 2015, African-Americans in San Francisco had a cannabis-related hospitalization rate at 5.8 times higher than that of the overall city population. The take-home message is that policy can disproportionately impact different communities, and there are many, there may be unintended consequences which people aren't aware of or necessarily understand the connections between. A report from the Ventura County Behavioral Health System showed that there was a large difference between how local businesses and large corporations in the cannabis world operated. Small businesses were more likely to be responsive to community and public health concerns, be more easily regulated at a city level. They're less likely to engage in mass marketing strategies and lobbying campaigns. Some recommendations are to limit the size and number of companies, restrict amount of cannabis plants processed and sold. Consider requiring businesses to operate as nonprofits, prohibit the accumulation of licenses by a single entity, and prohibit license transfers. So when it comes to advertising, some of the efforts in substance abuse prevention that we typically support are restrictions on advertising, especially ones that target directly to youth. So in a study, thirty, when it came to tobacco, 30% of three-year-olds correctly matched Joe Camel with a picture of a cigarette. Allowing cannabis stores to open up into the community allows more advertising opportunities to be exposed to kids. So overall, any increase in youth exposure to alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, et cetera, really correlates to an increase of use of these substances for our kids. So we really need to consider that, and keep this in mind if we really want to prioritize our kids' health in the future. Do you want to do the last, did you do the last point? Oh, yeah. So in LA, youth living near more medical cannabis dispensary shows more frequent use of cannabis and a greater expectation of positive cannabis benefits. So really, opening up these cannabis stores within, near any area around our youth is essentially trying to promote it and kind of convince them to kind of be lured into the advertisements that they do display around the community. So when it comes to buffer zones, reports from the City Council Study Session on May 28th included two zoning maps for potential cannabis businesses. One which includes daycares and preschools, and one which does not. As mentioned in my previous slide, 30% of three-year-olds can identify Joe Camel on a tobacco ad. So why wouldn't they be able to recognize it on a marijuana ad? Even at an early age such as three, they are already understanding branding, recognizing advertisements, and are aware of what stores are opening up in their communities. So the buffer zones should definitely include schools, daycares, preschools, and other really youth-sensitive areas. Any marijuana implementation or legalization should definitely avoid locations that are close to youth, regardless of how young or how old. So if you look at your zoning maps, and if you were to go under, even at the 600 feet from youth-sensitive buffer zones, Jefferson Union High School District's non-traditional schools could be affected by a cannabis business opening up. And so my data for this slide is different because the CDC data is constantly changing every week. But for the recent rush of vaping illness, illness cases, the updated data says that biological testing taken from 29 patients recently showed that there's a vitamin E acetate, which is a compound that's added to e-cigarettes for consumption. And as of 11/5/2019, there's been 2,051 cases, 39 deaths, and three deaths in California. As of the 28th, it is still 86% of patients reported THC use prior to the symptom onset. And as of 10/15, 14% of cases were in youth 18-years of age or younger. 40% of cases were in youth 18 to age 24-years of age, and 25% of cases were 25 to 34-years of age. So this is a illness that is really affecting our youth, younger people in our communities. And in summary, policy decisions have disproportionate and sometimes unintended and unforeseen impacts on different communities. Small businesses have typically been more sensitive to community needs and impacts. As of 2000, October 28, 2019, 86% of vaping illnesses involved THC. Some suggestions in the prevention world are to restrict product advertising that is attractive to youth, and protect all children and youth in sensitive areas. Conduct education campaigns which recognize that up to the age of 25, the brain continues to develop at a large rate. And in closing, that the Health Department staff, AOD staff, prevention staff is always available for you if you have any documents that you'd like reviewed by the Health Department in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I thought it was an excellent presentation. You brought up some very interesting and important issues. So I want to thank you for coming and sharing with us your knowledge and the information today. Let me turn it off to the council. If anyone has any comments or remarks?
I just wanted to know if you have any statistics on, like, dual diagnosis. I used to have this position back in the day. But, you know, when we talk about drug use and self-medication and mental health, is there anything related to that?
There's a lot of data saying that, I mean, mental health, untreated mental health-related diagnoses, you know, people may self-medicate with using substances. We can definitely get you articles on it. They are so, so linked together.
Right.
If I were to tell myself six years ago when I started the position, I wouldn't have started with doing AOD education. I would have started with wellness education, mental health education, and then AOD prevention education.
Right. Because I think that, what, from what I've learned, having this position years ago, was that a lot of times, a lot of youth start taking drugs because of different situations of mental health, depression, anxiety, not having the conduits for support for mental health. And that may have led to not having the proper professional support for youth that, you know, are looking towards their peers that maybe see drug use as a way to self-medicate and to numb the situation than to address it.
Yeah, we have some public comment from school staff later on.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to what they have to say to give you some anecdotal data on it. But yeah, definitely, there's definitely linkages. And there's also peer pressures and different peer pressures today, and access too is, makes a big difference about how many messages they're getting in a, in a community, and if it's easy to get, if they also see their parents and adults using too. It definitely influences what youth may choose to do.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say thank you for your presentation this evening around providing some of the data that you've stated here today, and also for your work in youth development and working with young people. So thank you for that, most especially around ensuring their health and wellness is, is key, and that's the next generation. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
First, I'd like to ask, the mayor, is it appropriate that they can give, are they allowed to do the public comment?
I have public comment.
But I mean, okay. I want to say that thank you for your hard work in the schools. You know, when I attended the visual things that you do, even at TRP and, and other places. And that's what doing the education, to see the numbers is very disturbing. Because I know that they have great support systems, as the principal that's here from Jeff. But I do know the sensitive areas, as you were saying, how it's related to our Thornton School, Pershing, I mean, we're like an artery of all these different schools, Woodrow. I mean, it's a lot to keep in mind when we're, when you look at that, because each thing is related in our, in our community, and it's like a high impact. So to think that you have that responsibility to help guide and make sure that our youth are given chances to be well and make the best out of their life. So I appreciate your hard work, and, and the information is very important for people to have. So thank you very much. Look forward to the public comments. Thank you to the youth for being here.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor, at this time.
Okay. Let me call on some speakers who have completed a speaker card. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let me first call up Jaden Ridley. Come on up. Welcome. How are you doing?
Good evening, City Council members and mayor. My name is Jaden Ridley, and I am a sixth grader at Thomas R. Policy to Middle School. Thank you for the time to speak. I am here to represent the youth in Daly City and talk about how cannabis negativity impacts kids. I believe that if cannabis stores open up near my community, I wouldn't want them to be there because it can increase drug uses for both adults and kids. I wouldn't feel safe if these stores were around my neighborhood, schools, or even places where kids play, because they could breathe in the smoke and it could damage our lungs. I think as City Council members, you should support and prioritize our health and our safety. I feel like if there was more access to cannabis, kids would use it more since it would be easier to get. I feel like it would increase people's anxiety, stress, and addictions. Having kids use these products around schools and around our neighborhoods would make it difficult for kids to focus in school, and they would feel uncomfortable. That's why stores like these can't open up near us. Please think about kids and what type of environment you want us to grow up in when you make these, when you make decisions. We want to be in a city where we feel safe and can breathe clean air. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jaden. Wonderfully said. Tiffany Bruce.
Good evening, City Council members and mayor. Thank you for the time to speak. My name is Tiffany Bruce, and I'm a sixth grade student at Thomas R. Policy to Middle School. I'm here to talk about how it's not safe for our communities to have an increase in cannabis stores because it negatively impacts kids. I know people in, at school and in my community that smoke and vape. This makes me upset because I don't want them to destroy their health or even get cancer. From my experience, I've seen students my age around school using vapes and other drug products. And if more cannabis stores open up around our neighborhoods, kids have more access to cannabis and other drug products. I don't want to see kids getting sick because they are using these products. If we take steps to protect kids' health now, we can help them achieve their dreams and succeed in the future. Please consider us, kids, and our health when you make these decisions. Think about your kids, kids in your families, or kids like us. We're the future of the city. So think about if you want us breathing in cannabis smoke or using these products if you allow cannabis stores to open up. Once again, thank you for your time to speak, and I know you will make the best decision for the future of the kids in the community.
Thank you, Tiffany. Wonderfully said. Dan Shun? Is there a Dan?
Schmidt?
Oh, yeah. I, I'm not reading this right. Schmidt. Come on up.
Well, thank you for having me.
Of course.
It's intimidating to follow up these great speakers here.
It is.
You guys did a great job. I work at the Daly City Youth Health Center.
Why don't you come?
Oh, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. And we treated 273 youth last year for mental health with our therapists, and we provided 1,475 mental health therapy appointments. And I just, you know, spoke to a couple therapists to get their feedback on what cannabis is doing to some of the kids that they're seeing. And I, I really got some great feedback. And someone told me, you know, right now in society, in our country, there's all this kind of celebration of marijuana being legal, and talking about the benefits of CBD. And I think for some, you know, like, people who are over 18, who can handle it, it's a good thing. But for some of these kids, they are really struggling. You know, they see on the radio, oh, CBD is, is going to help me. And so they're taking it, and then they're coming in, and they're, they're having these problems. They are saying that they don't feel like they're the person that they used to be in, in terms of being ambitious. And they feel depressed, and they feel lonely. So, you know, you know, I think it's really great that we're really focusing on tobacco, but I also think it's really important that we protect the kids when it comes to marijuana. And so, you know, I just want to thank you for your time. And, you know, I, I hope that we can all, you know, take in this great presentation about kids' minds being molded and protect them. So thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Melissa Ambrose.
Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am Jefferson Union High School District's Wellness Coordinator. So I spent 22 years at Oceana High School, and the last 12 until this year, I was the Wellness Counselor. And there's no way I can say what I want to say in the short amount of time that's allotted. But my deepest concern is that young people, we now know about brain development, and the thing that's so important about brain development is that when we have cell phones and we have lots of access to drugs and alcohol, young people are developing endorphin receptors, extra endorphin receptors in their brains, and setting a cycle pattern of addiction throughout their lives. I personally think that, you know, like, helping young people understand that marijuana is a drug, there's a myth out there that it's not addictive, the, the rates of THC in it absolutely do make it addictive. And my biggest concern in the wellness sort of arena is that young people are coming to us and saying, I'm anxious, and I don't sleep. And they believe that marijuana is the answer to both of those things. And we know that we don't go into stage four REM with drugs or alcohol. Like, so they may be using pot to fall asleep, but they're not going into stage four REM, so they're getting increasingly exhausted. And if we increase endorphin receptors, then marijuana doesn't actually help with anxiety. Because when you don't have the marijuana in your system and your endorphin receptors are not filled, you're more anxious. And it is a downer. So we're seeing, you know, things are hard right now for young people, and I don't ever sort of advocate increasing things that will contribute to depression, anxiety. So that's, that's a pretty big concern. And just, I think you all know, so as I close, Daly City, North County, San Mateo County, we don't have a lot of services. We, like, the Wellness Counselors are doing crisis day in, day out. We don't have a lot of places to refer kids. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mark Bashirz.
Hello. Welcome. Hi, Mark Bashirz, Jefferson High School. Good to see you. We're council members, mayor. Thanks for letting me come and speak. Absolutely. Really, we could have done a mic drop after the young ladies spoke up there. I look forward to seeing you guys at Jefferson High School in the near future. You've, you've heard a lot of facts and statistics, and, and a lot of good scientific words from Ms. Ambrose. Thank you for, for that. In short, just what I see at the high school level. I remember when, when California voted to make medicinal marijuana legal, and I, I would hear students talking with, with such joy and glee and eagerness and anticipation about getting their medical marijuana card, the same way we used to talk about getting a driver's license once upon, once upon a time. And I thought that that was very, very disappointing. Now, as, as California has made it legal for recreational use, I hear my father's voice in my head saying that we're going to pay the dividends for our casual attitude towards marijuana. With all the stuff that, that we've heard, you know, one of the, the salient features that I see when I watch my students is it makes them okay with being bored. Boredom inspires us to go out and, I don't know, write an opera, paint a picture, you know, work on our layup. When the kids are all right with being bored, they can sit there, they can ignore homework, they can ignore their studies, they can spend hours just fascinated and tranced by a video game, rather than, than taking on some of the more interesting things in life. I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to make a statement about what our priorities are and what we expect of our young people. Thank you.
Thank you. So those are all the speaker cards that I have on this issue. Let me say thank you again for coming out and letting us know what your thoughts are, especially with the kids. You, you guys have told us a lot of really important stuff, and it's, it's something we were going to take into consideration. We haven't decided the issue yet, meaning that we are deciding the parameters and the regulation regarding how the city is going to deal with the, the new law that had passed. But rest assured that what you have said today is going to be impactful on our decision. We don't take it lightly, and it's clear to me that you all very much care about your community, about your fellow kids, and your school, and your friends, and the people that are affected. So you have done your job today in coming and addressing us with what you have said, and we will not forget. And when this issue comes up again, I invite you to come back and remind us again what you have just said, because you need to be part of this discussion. In whatever form ultimately we develop and how this shakes out, you should know that you are an important part of it, and we welcome more and more of your input. So thank you again. I appreciate you coming here, and we'll see you again hopefully soon. Okay? Any other comments? Any councilman want to make? No? All right. Thanks again. We'll move on to our next item. The next item is building reach codes. We have Rafael Reyes, Director of Energy Programs from Peninsula Clean Energy. Mr. Reyes.
Honorable mayor, members of the City Council, Daly City staff and, and public, my name's Rafael Reyes, Director of Energy Programs with Peninsula Clean Energy. Thank you so much for your time today. I know you have important items on the agenda, so I very much appreciate this time with you. What I'm here, first, a little bit of background on Peninsula Clean Energy. Most of you may be familiar. Peninsula Clean Energy is the primary energy service provider for San Mateo County. We were launched by unanimous support of all the city councils and Board of Supervisors to provide cleaner and lower rates to San Mateo County. And we're already delivering a number of benefits to the community, including $18 million a year saved by residents of the county through the lower rates that Peninsula Clean Energy provides. I also want to call out that in addition to providing cleaner power at lower rates, our other objectives are also to reduce greenhouse gases and the impacts of climate change, as well as foster the economic development as well as foster the economic development of San Mateo County. And that's part of the underlying driver here around the building reach codes, which I'm gonna discuss with you. So, first of all, what are building reach codes? As many of you know, the state develops new building codes every three years. We're in the middle of that cycle now with new state codes that will go into effect on January 1st. Reach codes are local enhancements to the state building code, and all local jurisdictions may enact local enhancements based on local needs at any time. It is helpful and efficient if they're done in sync with the state building code cycle. And this initiative that really local governments asked us to undertake is intended to improve both the economy within San Mateo County as well as the energy performance for new construction in the county. Again, this is solely new construction, not remodels and the like for existing construction. And the reach codes are intended to address two areas. One is building electrification, so reducing the use of natural gas, which is a major greenhouse gas source, as well as fostering the use of electric vehicles through increased EV charging availability. Briefly, benefits from these reach codes include significant economic benefits. If we take a look, for example, at electric vehicles, currently, we're on a trajectory that will lead us, hopefully, to over 45,000 electric vehicles by 2025. If we reach that target, residents will save over $50 million a year in reduced fuel costs. In other words, the cost of electricity to fuel an electric vehicle is substantially less than using gas. Typical EV driver saves $1,000 to $1,500 a year by using an electric vehicle as opposed to gas. In addition, we're looking at these reach codes as a way to develop safer and healthier homes and buildings. You know, the San Bruno fire is still fresh in many people's memories. But in addition to that, we know that earthquakes, in earthquakes, natural gas are a major trigger based on state assessment for fires. And we know that we're in a major risk zone for earthquakes, of course. We also see a significant opportunity for fiscal prudence here. The state is on track for climate neutrality by 2045. Every piece of natural gas equipment that gets installed will have to be replaced if we don't do it upfront. And again, this only applies to new construction. A couple other data points that are extremely important, looking at all-electric buildings. There's extensive research showing that all-electric buildings are less expensive to build than buildings with natural gas. The reason for that is you don't have the natural gas plumbing, you don't have the metering, special venting, and so on and so forth. And as a result, on average, a typical single-family home will cost $10,000, over $10,000 less to construct as an all-electric home. And it's as a result of data like this and an extensive study by the University of California, that the University of California has committed to all-electric buildings for all its classes, and that includes dormitories, which are effectively multifamily dwellings, labs, and classrooms. And their assessment was they're less expensive to build and essentially a wash-cost equivalent for operating costs. There's a lot on this slide. I'm not gonna go through all of this. But the takeaways here are that looking, there was a statewide cost-effectiveness analysis and looking at all the appliances within the homes. And if we take just one example, the water heater at the very top, it's over $500 less to install a heat pump water heater than it is to install a natural gas water heater. And a heat pump water heater is also highly efficient. But there is some additional utility costs, so a net increase, in the case of the water heater, of about $7 a month. And if you go all the way around the appliances, if you will, the net result is, on average, a single-family home, again, will cost some $10,580 less to build. There will be a slight potential increase on bill effect of about $7. However, there is an opportunity to add more solar or increase efficiency through the savings at the time of construction. And then you can actually make that a net benefit on bill as well. There are three different types of codes that have emerged over the course of the past year with regards to buildings. The first, you may have already heard of, what's been termed the "natural gas ban", best known in the ordinance by the City of Berkeley. But now, other cities have adopted this approach. Morgan Hill, just last week, as well as the City of San Jose for all low-rise buildings. This allows any gas hookup. And it's very straightforward, if you will, but very absolute. There are other approaches. The second is an all-electric required for most uses. And this basically says for water heating and for space heating and maybe other elements like dryers, and maybe or maybe not for stoves, they must be electric. And then the third track is what we would describe as an electric preferred code. And the electric preferred code says you can do natural gas or you can do all-electric. If you do all-electric, you just meet state code. If you do with natural gas, then we're gonna ask more of you and increase the efficiency of the building. So, that's the third option. That's what we would call an electric preferred code. On electric vehicles, there are three major levers, if you will, that you can pull. The first is the speed of charging, and there are three levels. And I won't go through them all in detail here, but to say the first is basically a standard plug. The second is a dryer outlet, and the third is what's known as a fast charging. You may have seen, of course, the Tesla Fast Chargers as one example. Another is the level of readiness in buildings. EV capable is a term that says at the panel, there's enough electric capacity for charging, and there's a conduit, but there may not be the full circuit. The second is EV ready, where you finish the circuit and you have an outlet. And the third would be an actual EV charging station, which may have certain additional features. And the last major lever, if you will, is how many spaces does this apply to? So, through a public process in which we held some eight different workshops across the county, had some 350 participants, we developed a set of model codes. And here, what we have is essentially the PCE's recommendations in this area. For building electrification, I should acknowledge here that the City of Menlo Park actually took this approach, and we saw it as quite beneficial. We're recommending what we would describe as an all-electric required for most cases code. And typically, that would include space and water heating, dryers, and you may have options to include or not include gas stoves, may have options for certain building classes, like commercial kitchens or labs. You may wish to expand solar, again, to derive more of the utility benefits into other building segments. So, that's one option that PCE is recommending for building electrification. For electric vehicle charging, we're recommending an approach which ensures that every resident in a multifamily unit has access to one space that has some form of charging. So, that's in multi-unit dwellings. Sorry, I skipped over single-family, where we're recommending two spaces because they're increasingly families with two plug-in vehicles. And then various levels for other commercial scenarios. I should also note here that PCE will be coming in with incentives specifically for affordable housing because we know that there are additional capital costs associated with EV charging specifically. Quick glance at, you know, where things are in terms of action by cities. There are over 30 cities that are exploring reach codes across San Mateo and Santa Clara County in various stages. Here's a quick synopsis. As you can see here, we have several that have already adopted. So, Menlo Park, Morgan Hill, Mountain View, Palo Alto, San Mateo, San Jose have all adopted some form of reach code, and there are various flavors, as I noted earlier, and happy to discuss this in more detail if you have questions. Some quick Q and A on major concerns. Builders note that sometimes distribution grid upgrades are required. This is sometimes true. We have been studying the data on this. The data from the PUC, though, does indicate that distribution grid upgrades for EV infrastructure, which is normally much more low than building electrification, is pretty rare currently. About 3% of new construction has that as a requirement. But typically, that is more than offset by the savings associated with doing an electric building. Resilience and power shut-offs, this is a real issue. However, natural gas does not really solve that problem. Most modern natural gas appliances require electricity to run. And so, that's not in and itself a solution, although a stove, you could light with a lighter. We clearly need more state policy around the grid hardening issues. That's a very real issue. And PCE has committed up to $10 million to advance resilience in the county. Uniformity, we're working across, you know, both San Mateo and Santa Clara counties to encourage uniformity. But, you know, local governments frequently take their own direction, and we will support Daly City in whatever direction you may wish to pursue, to minimize risks and costs associated with natural gas use. There's a perception among some that all-electric heating is necessarily more expensive. That's mostly unfamiliarity with the technology. But everybody who has a refrigerator understands what a heat pump is, which basically moves heat from one place to another. And there's extensive research showing the effectiveness of these technologies. And finally, PCE is quickly moving to 100% clean energy, so that is cleaning up the grid side. And equipment availability, this is technology that's actually been around for a long time. What we do know is additional training is needed, and PCE will be stepping in with training for builders, designers, and contractors. Resources that we're offering, $10,000 grant, optional model codes, consultant time, and tools for adoption and implementation. And with that, happy to take questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much for your presentation, sir. The whole idea for PCE is to reduce GHGs and bring about awareness, and that's why customers sign up. I have a couple of questions. The $10,000 grant, which will be looking, if we're going to adopt the reach codes, to which I have a question. But are we obligated to provide, to go electric?
There is no obligation to enact an ordinance to receive the grant. The grant is to consider and provide support for staff time associated with that consideration.
Thank you. My concern is, I thought that as per your slide presentation, it says electrification for new construction only. And I'm concerned because what if a person with new construction, they want to go gas, natural gas? And I don't want to be obligated, nope, this is new construction, has to be all-electric. Have you ever cooked with electric before?
So, let me speak to that.
Yes.
This is an understandable, frequent concern. So, the two things to be said. First of all, many cities have chosen to allow natural gas stoves, so that could be a path. But there's also substantial lack of familiarity with induction stoves, which are now, it turns out, if you look at Consumer Reports, the top 10 stoves from last year were all-electric, and the top two were induction. My wife had exactly the same reaction. I said, hey, we should go all-electric, and she was like, my stove! And I brought her an induction stove, and they are instantaneous.
Right.
And cool.
Yes.
And very responsive, and many times, people like it. But obviously, there's some preference there, and you may choose, you know, naturally at your discretion to allow people to choose a natural gas stove.
Thank you for that. I think the whole idea is to bring about awareness. I'm familiar with induction, and it's pretty quick. I know I went to do about barbecuing, though. But I'm just being facetious. Let's see. PCE has, I've seen, has offered rebates for the purchase of EVs.
That's correct.
The only thing I ask is you do it across the board to everybody and not just particular manufacturers.
Understood.
Okay. Across the board, everyone.
Well, how much are the rebates?
It depends if, I'll let you, go ahead.
So, we have two programs. We have a new vehicle program and also a low-income program. The low-income program, it's up to $4,000 for a used plug-in vehicle. The new vehicle program for battery-electric vehicles is $1,000, and then for a battery-electric, and then $700 for a plug-in hybrid. We are not currently covering all makes. The rationale is that we do a competitive process, which brings additional discounts from the dealerships because it's competitive. So, that creates that dynamic, and I certainly appreciate the thoughts with regards to all the makes. We probably would not have as good discounts if we went down that path. And that's the balancing act.
Well, you can't buy a Tesla. I think...
Oh, Tesla is not covered.
They have been invited. So, every dealership in the county was invited to participate.
Okay.
All right.
Let's see. $10,000, no obligation, new construction, reduced greenhouse gas. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a question in regards to, just for the education for the public around the rebates, or you mentioned that there is about $4,000 for low-income individuals. What is the threshold, and so that people understand if they qualify?
Yes. So, details are on our website. But 400% above the federal poverty line is the breakpoint that we're using. And we are, the intention there is to be in sync with other programs, such as the Air Quality Management District's program and a soon-to-be-launched, relaunched statewide Clean Vehicle Assistance Program. And it will be possible to stack, if you will. And if someone goes to the Air District, for example, to Clean Cars for All, which is a current Cash for Clunkers program where you give back an older vehicle, there's up to $5,500 in that program, and we will add $2,000 on top of that.
So, do you know what that is? You mentioned...
400%.
Yes.
And I apologize. I should recall the number. I don't recall it off the top of my head.
Okay, okay. Thank you. And then the other question, and I think the vice mayor mentioned it, that at this point, the reach code, it's not necessarily an obligation. It's for us to decide on exactly how we would approach what type of reach code the City of Daly City feels right for the community.
That's correct, and we will support that effort in whatever direction the city wishes to take.
And then the $10,000 is not linked to, it can be utilized to assess what direction, you know, the city can go for. It's not necessarily like you get the $10,000 only if you create a reach code. It could be basically an assessment of understanding what would be best viable and what fits our community.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
She said it better than I did.
Other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you again for your presentation. I have a few questions, please. I remember you were saying there was an increase of capital cost for this, and could you elaborate a little more? And then I didn't see any numbers, and you said that there would be money... And then I didn't see any numbers, and you said that there would be monies, or how, could you explain a little bit more, please?
Yeah, so there are two major tracks, if you will, for the building reach codes. There's electric buildings--
Mm-hmm.
--and then electric vehicles. And electric buildings are generally less expensive to build. We're not adding additional incentives there because they're already economically, in most cases, preferable. But on the electric vehicle, electric vehicle infrastructure side, we know that there are additional costs to put the additional, you know, circuits associated with EV charging.
Right.
We do have a study that itemizes those costs. They vary depending on how much, how big the parking lot is, what type of parking lot, and various other variables. But in general, $2,000 is a pretty good number to think about in terms of the costs for EV charging, you know, per space. Again, there are a lot of variables here. And PCE will come in with incentives for affordable housing to ensure that that is cost-neutral or close to cost-neutral, so there's no added burden for affordable housing.
Yeah, for the particular affordable housing, but would this also be a hindrance for a developer? Like, would maybe have to pay the cost--
So--
Initially?
Well, as--
For new construction?
So for market rate, for market rate, as a percentage of the cost of a market-rate construction now, it's very, very small, and it's extremely cost-effective. And again, we can provide the cost-effectiveness study on that, which we commissioned. For affordable housing, though, however, we know that financially, it's extremely constrained for a whole variety of complicated reasons in the affordable housing space. And so we want to make sure that there's no added burden there. For market rate, however, though, we expect that they will more than recoup the costs, especially as EV adopters choose properties that actually can support vehicles that they want to own.
So I know we have, this is for new construction, but I know that, I don't know if this has any correlation with it, I guess Mr. Chu or yourself would know. Wouldn't we have to, we already have a lot, we have 11 areas in our city where we have the old equipment, with the older trans, where we need new transformers. I mean, we can't even keep the lights on in these areas that cost, I think, $1 million, if not more, to be fixed. So in Daly City, how would that affect that? And to me, like, how can all-electric work here?
Sure. So a couple of thoughts on that. One is that we include in the model codes a breakpoint that says, you know, above a certain cost, you know, you're going to be exempt, right? So if you've got some outrageous, you know, multimillion-dollar distribution grid upgrade required, that's going to be a cost to the property owner, then that would allow them to take that as an exemption. So that's number one. Number two is, is distribution grid upgrades are normally costs, in most cases, borne by PG&E, not, in most cases, not borne by the property owner. If there are, above a certain point, and again, our cost-effectiveness study gets into this, above a certain point, then some of the costs can go to the property owner. But again, those are costs that we believe that the property can more than cover from the savings that they would have from an all-electric construction.
Right, okay. Yeah, because here, I guess, as you know, that, so our 11 areas, we do know that part of that is PG&E, but given the current climate, we don't see, foresee, I could be wrong, that PG&E is going to give us $1 million for those areas? Mr. Chu, thank you.
I would expect probably not.
Yes, Councilmember DeJavani, the areas that you're talking about is regulated output for our streetlight circuits only.
Right.
And those only apply to streetlights.
Okay.
Those circuits do not apply to individual homes, and so--
Okay, or construction.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and just a couple more. Thank you for your patience in answering the questions. When this reach code came about, who was consulted? How did this arise? Were there engineers a part of this? Were there developers a part of this? Builders? Who came up with this concept? You said, I'm very familiar with PCE and like the people on it, but I'm just concerned that this is a regional and not a state at this time, and that's a big difference when somebody comes to the counter and a developer comes in, and are we going to be facing litigation? Because the guy's going to be, they're going to be upset, not going to be able to build what they want?
Yeah, so--
And is our building people, are they going to be liable?
Yeah, so a couple--
Building officials.
--things on that. We very, very carefully studied the issues around what is legally permissible.
Right.
And so one of the core elements is that, first of all, local governments can enact building code enhancements, so that's within their jurisdiction to do so, as long as it's cost-effective under the state rules. This definitively is cost-effective under the state rules. In fact, we relied on the state cost-effectiveness study to evaluate what measures could be executed within the reach codes. So in that regard, we are on very firm ground. In regards to the public process, as I mentioned, this was an open, open public process that included building officials, we had, you know, some architects, we had city staff from numerous cities involved, and also, it was open to general public. So we had workshops that were segment-specific. And then subsequent to that, have had extensive contact with building officials, with builders, and other key stakeholders, such as, you know, we had an extensive hour-and-a-half discussion and then considerable amount of correspondence with Midbed Housing, just to give one example. So that dialogue is ongoing. I'm not going to say that there isn't still questions and concerns. And, you know, to be perfectly candid, not everybody is enthusiastic about the idea. But we see and have, you know, gotten substantial positive feedback from a lot of folks who see this as the right step. And it's actually a statewide effort. I mean, we have a local effort, but there is a statewide move with many jurisdictions taking these steps.
So who, if you don't mind me asking, were our building officials spoken to or conferred? And I would like to know what their take was, because there are building officials--
Of course.
--know our city, and I would like to hear what their stance is on this reach code.
Right. So we have recently had two meetings with staff, and forgive me, I'm not remembering if Daly City staff participated in the early workshops or not. I don't know, Stephen, if you have any comment on that?
I know we went to the kickoff meetings--
Yeah.
--of our building department.
Okay.
I'm talking about the building officials.
So we did have a meeting with--
Like Val and those--
Yeah, so we had a meeting that included Val now four weeks ago, more or less, and then a meeting more recently with Tatum, your Director of Community Development now, about two weeks ago, two, three weeks ago. So we have had those conversations with your city staff.
Oh, I have just said, may I? Good.
Okay.
Go ahead, I was, no, no, I'm not finished. But go on, let her speak.
I would just add that should the council consider, the staff would absolutely be available to answer questions specific to Daly City codes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And then also, with the, when we say about all-electricity, usually the cost is usually higher, not lower. Like, if I have an all-electric stove, I've noticed that if I move into a place, and I move, I have a gas stove, then the cost to me, for me, is, you know, a lot. And we have our shut offs. People are running out getting generators, and that certainly is not energy-efficient, but they, people like to have their lights on, and that, so that's a concern for me. But you're saying that we have the wiggle room to create our own?
Absolutely.
And that would not be the change? And that, it's my understanding that in California, and especially in this area, that when we do get electricity, it's not necessary reducing greenhouse gas, because don't we get some of our electricity from Arizona? And then from Arizona, they use coal?
So there's very little coal in the state--
Left. I mean, here.
Yeah.
But we are connected to get ours in Arizona.
Very little is imported into the state of California, generally, but then I would add, with regards to PCE, we're currently, the standard product, EcoPlus, is 50% renewable now, and 80, close to 90% greenhouse gas-free. We will be moving by 2021 to be 100% greenhouse gas-free, and then 100% renewable by 2025. So we're very confident from that standpoint, that from a grid perspective, it's substantially cleaner than a natural gas alternative.
Okay, let's see. And then, like, again, so none of our building officials, they'll be protected in case there's any kind of, like, developer, and then you'll be providing the training locally?
We will be providing some training, that's correct.
Some training, but if, but who will do the ongoing training, and who's going to monitor any of the violations or what have you? Or just our building--
So, and obviously, there will be some dialogue if the city chooses to proceed on this, but, you know, it's our intention to provide support, let's call it, in the kind of launch phase. But ultimately, of course, this would be a Daly City ordinance to be managed by Daly City staff. And naturally, you know, it's very important that your city staff be comfortable with the approach, and that's what the dialogue would be in terms of, you know, what makes sense for the city.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I do appreciate that everybody's trying to give incentives, but for me, I feel kind of uncomfortable when there's monies involved, and anybody, not PCE, because I like PCE, in particular with Supervisor Pine and all them, the Trailblazers, Carol Groom. But I feel uncomfortable because there's money being offered to the cities, even though I'm sure the intent is not that. But it just feels a little, like, swating, like, you $10,000, and then, you know, we're going to help you out, but it ends up costing us, I don't know how much money, because we don't even know how much money is going to cost us yet.
Well, it's entirely optional, so, you know, whatever the council should feel comfortable with would be, we would be happy to work with you regardless.
So our decision tonight, if you have clarification on, Mr. Mayor, what would that be?
Making a decision tonight?
Oh, we don't?
No.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
I believe, I believe staff may be looking for direction on this. Am I correct on that?
So we have tonight on the agenda a letter of intent to explore reach codes. That's all it is. It's not adopting a reach code, it's not saying really anything specific. It's just to work with Peninsula Clean Energy, their consultant, the county, to explore the options. And, you know, Raphael presented a bunch of those options tonight that we can explore.
And will we be able to have our building people, the building officials weigh in as well?
Yes, of course, yeah.
And then--
We've already started meeting on this to explore the topic, and our chief building official was involved, so is our economic and community development director. So we're all part of this team that has to look at it, so--
So it's not just one-sided? It's going, we're going to get both sides, right?
Correct.
Not just PCE side? Okay.
Correct, yeah. But, you know, it's not just PCE side, it's kind of this wider effort around reach codes that has existed before PCE even existed, so--
Okay.
I know just working in sustainability, that we've been talking about reach codes for years and years, and they've been a thing, especially in the Bay Area, because a lot of the governments are more progressive around energy consumption and--
Okay, so we're not committing to anything--
We're really not committing to anything besides exploring the topic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, Stephen, appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Stolti.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your patience.
Of course.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Sir, thank you so much. Want to let you know I used to be on the PCE committee, representing our city, and we do have a council member presently on the committee. I enjoy the concept, I enjoy what you're doing, it was definitely a learning experience, and thank you for reiterating of the move away from fossil fuels and coal, which some people probably don't know. PCE has also got into, basically, what I call futures. And the futures that PCE has been involved in is solar farming, to which we generate and get our electricity from the sun. Excellent job. So again, I'd like to thank you. We got a little tough road ahead, but a confused mind will always say no. So complete and full transparency is always the key, and it will always work. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a couple of speaker cards on this issue, so let's go with Doug Silverstein.
Thank you for your time, council and staff. My name's Doug Silverstein. I am a nonprofit leader in San Mateo County in the area of environment and sustainability. And I appreciate you inviting PCE here and having a great discussion. I am speaking today in favor of all-electric reach codes and swiftly moving away from fossil fuels in general. This is an excellent way to do, to take a first step doing that. I want to emphasize, this isn't necessarily about saving the planet, this is about saving our communities. And it's about happy and healthy living for my kids and my future grandkids and all the youth out here. Our, we've had a lot of local scientists from Berkeley and Stanford involved in the global scientific research that says that fossil fuels is hurting our planet, and it's human-based. So what are the impacts, really? What's going on here is that we have health and safety issues from the use of fossil fuels. We know that we have fires and that we have heat, and those are real community issues. We also have a lot of cost issues. So if we continue to burn fossil fuels, you guys and your successors and the community are going to bear large burdens, large cost burdens, from the fossil fuel use. So it's really prudent, not just from saving the planet, but from saving the community, is lowering the cost and decreasing the impact of safety and health. So I do want to also add that this is entirely preventable, these costs, if we reduce our fossil fuel use. And it can be within a just transition, in that there's no cost to make, as you've heard from Raphael and the PCE staff, there's no cost to our community, really, to do this, but essentially, there's just a lot of upside and benefit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Silverstein. Adam Bailey?
Good evening, Mayor Bueno Ventura and the council members. Thank you for taking the time to discuss building standards, reach, and O.G. codes. My name is Adam Bailey, I'm an eighth grader. I'm speaking today because I'm concerned about our environment and the future of my generation, given that we're in a climate crisis. I'm also speaking for my mom because she lost her voice. She's part of the campaign for fossil-free buildings in Silicon Valley, including 27 other groups working to accelerate a transition away from fossil fuels used to heat and power appliances in our homes and buildings. You received a con, oh, never mind. They're arguing you to move forward quickly with the Menlo, with the Menlo Park style, stronger version of the reach code that would require all-electric new construction for homes and buildings. Preventing the use of fossil fuels, include natural gas and new construction, will create more affordable, cleaner, healthier, and more resilient housing and buildings throughout Daly City. Adopting a reach code is the single biggest climate action that Daly City can take this year. I hope you will prioritize it and move ahead quickly. Following the lead of Mountain View and Menlo Park, which have recently adopted all-electric reach codes, this policy would maximize the benefits for Daly City, including all-electric homes save at least $6,000 in construction costs, improving health and safety. Electric homes save up to four tons of carbon per year and improve resilience. Also, combining battery energy storage with solar is a smart way to provide heat and power during grid outages. Fifteen cities in California have already adopted policies to phase out fossil fuels from new construction. I hope you will direct staff to return to council quickly with a strong all-electric reach code to avoid gas use with all-electrical requirements or prohibit gas use entirely. This is an important climate change to phase out dirty fossil gas fuel in our homes and buildings. Let's work together towards a fossil-free and climate-stable future. Thank you.
Very well said. Those are all the speaker cards I have. I want to thank Mr. Reyes for your presentation today. That was very informative, very important, and thank you for coming and sharing with us. Any other questions or comments, Dr. Rod?
I just want to say thank you, Raphael, for coming. I'll see you at the next PCE meeting, as always.
I gave you up.
And I also want to thank the youth speaker in talking about these important issues. I think that you're seeing a trend among-- I think that you're seeing a, a trend amongst youth globally, they're speaking up, and ultimately, it's the type of planet they're going to inherit, and my kids are going to inherit. So, thank you for coming and, you know, and thank you to Stephen as well for representing Daly City and, you know, trying to make Daly City a little bit more greener and to address the issues of climate change.
Thank you, Dr. Rod. Ms. Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for being up on the mic as a young person, speaking your mind around what is important in our community and really around impacting our community and ensuring that we save the earth and also find ways to proactively see how we can change what is happening currently. I want to say thank you, Stephen, as well, for all of the work you've done. I think in, in my perspective, it's obvious the direction of ensuring that we move in kind of a green way around finding clean energy is, is what's suitable. But I also think we, we have to also look at, I, I haven't seen, like, any more analysis just in, within Daly City. And so I, in order for me, I just need to know what, what has transpired around, just analysis and then impacts moving forward. And that's something I would ask, request from staff, so thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Ma- Mayor. Yeah, I just want to say it's great always that when we know that your, your generation is fighting the number-one thing for climate change, because many of the adults that my age, that I did fight, I'm, I'm sure it was Stephen, I'm older, much older than him, but when it still becomes an issue and nothing really was done for you, and you're still fighting for that, I, I have to commend you for that, because of the youth having to face these things is really unacceptable, and that we have a duty to make sure that your future is protected as well as your health, because that's, that's part of the health as well and well-being. So, and thank you as well for coming, and, you know, Stephen, he's just got so much knowledge, we don't know how to always thank him every day. And, but I agree with Councilwoman Manalo. We just need more data, because we really don't have the solar capabilities as much in Daly City. We have some, but we don't have it as much as the moving down towards that area. But, but I'm sure we're, you know, we're looking into the, the ways, and Daly City are, just won an award thanks to Mr. Stolti's hard work and staff, so, for our green efforts, won two awards. So, I think that we can be ahead of the game with this, my colleagues, and figure it out. So, thank you to everyone, and here's to a better future for you.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
Just wants to quick, Mr. Mayor. Again, I have one more question, but I'm not going to bring you up, just something to ponder, it's something for staff. And as we move towards sustainability and E V, I'm sure that we should be moving to everyone owning E V vehicles as well. So, if you're going to require a developer to put it in all-electric, then you have to do the walk as well. So, I'm wondering how many people in this room drive E Vs? Oh, okay, there you go, all right. So, just something to think about. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much, everybody, on this item. Again, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your comments today. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes of the October 28th, 2019 minute, can I get it? I'm sorry.
Oh, no. It's not on consent.
We haven't done minutes.
Yeah, I have to be, I have something to say.
So, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
So moved.
Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'd like to add something to the minutes before we approve it.
All right, go ahead.
And I know that it doesn't seem to make Vice Mayor very happy, but I would like to add the part about, when they, when I did the, the part of the meeting of rescinding the vote, that, just to add the part that, of the reasons be around it, of what was said at that time, and that many discussion about rescinding the vote. And I, I can send it in if you'd like for me to.
Is that?
That helps the city clerk. If it help, if it helps you, I'll be happy to.
Oh, yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't we table approving of the minutes so that you can have whatever revised, so that we can all?
Okay.
Vote on it next time, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll just do it that way.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Along with that, like to also bring up the matter of proper decorum at our meetings, where you don't call out audience names, where you don't indicate which council members have special interests and which council members, their faces are to be remembered.
It's freedom of speech.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's go on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any objection? Hearing none, the agenda's approved. Let's go on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull any one of the seven items on consent? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, the consent is approved. Item number eight, under communications, which is the approval of the written response to the grand jury report regarding electric vehicle adoption in the cities and counties of San Mateo. Mr. Stolti?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. So, we're moving the discussion along with electric vehicles, and this was a really interesting report out of the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury. It was called Electric Vehicle Adoption in the Cities and Counties of San Mateo. It was partly informed by a survey of cities that we responded to, and we are asking for your approval of our draft written response to the presiding judge. What this report did, it basically outlined what steps local governments in San Mateo County have already taken to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions by converting their government fleet vehicles to electric vehicles. And it has statistics for many of the cities involved. We, some of the really interesting things that came out of the report are that about half of the cities in San Mateo County still don't have any electric vehicles in their government fleet. Another thing was that about half, again, have climate action plans that discuss the adoption of sustainable purchasing policies around converting fleet vehicles. And, and, and there's, there's, there's other interesting things there, too, but it's kind of like, half of the cities have E Vs. The report did specify four recommendations for cities. One was to review the government fleet procurement policy relating to electric vehicles. Another, and I'll, I'll tell you how we're already responding to these recommendations, too. Another was, was to analyze obstacles to implementation of an E V government fleet procurement policy. A third was to review the roadmap for municipal green fleets toolkit from the county of San Mateo, and then finally to investigate joining the climate mayor's E V purchasing collaborative. We are already part of the climate, climate mayors, by the way. So, what we've done, and I do want to highlight this, because we've been looking at electric vehicles in our government fleet for quite some time now, we are going to be updating our climate action plan in 2020, and so we, we will definitely be reviewing our procurement policy around fleet vehicles. It's something that's kind of been on our agenda for a while. The second is that, as part of that climate action plan update, our climate action plan is 10 years old. So, we, some cities in San Mateo County still don't have a climate action plan, so ours, is it outdated? Yes. You know, we, it definitely needs an update, and back then, electric vehicles weren't as big of a topic, so that's the reason why it's not in there. It certainly will, will resurface when we, when we do the update work. We'll also be analyzing and identifying obstacles and challenges related to the implementation of E V government fleet vehicles. I mean, you know, if, something that I've been thinking about for a while is, how do we get a charging station for our government fleet vehicles? And I just want to remind everybody that we do have three charging stations coming, all for free. And I, I think the process is, it takes a while to kind of get the P G N meters and stuff like that, so hopefully I'll have an update on, on that for you soon. But, that it, we did take that first step to, to install charging stations on public property. And then finally, we have already investigated the, the E V toolkit from the county, and we've already been in touch with the climate mayor's E V purchasing collaborative. We've had multiple meetings with those folks. It's a, it's a fantastic option. I think what staff is trying to figure out is, how do we pay for the vehicles? You know, do we put it in our capital improvement plan? You know, how do we work that out? Public Works has been connected with both of those groups as well, so the ball's rolling. And that's kind of the take-home message, that we, we definitely want E Vs in our, in our fleet.
Yeah.
So.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you very much, Stephen. Can I get a motion to accept the report and authorize city manager to prepare written responses?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Hearing none, that's approved. Thank you. Under number nine, item number nine, which is the award of construction contract for Bellhaven Court, Savage Way, and Sero Drive Water Main Improvement Project. Mr. Yip?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Staff would like to recommend the city council accept all bids and award a construction contract to D and D Pipelines in the amount of $1,146,380, and $380 for the Bellhaven Court, Savage Way, and Sero Drive Water Main Improvements, and also authorize the city manager to execute the, the contract. Staff further recommends the city council approve the design documents and those firm the secret determination of category exemption, and authorize a transfer of $46,000 from the water fund, street resurfacing water main project account to fully fund this project. This project proposes to install approximately 1,265 feet of polyvinyl PVC water main along Bellhaven Court, 1,210 feet along Sero Drive, and approximately 224 feet along Savage Way. The existing Duck the Lion Water Main has experienced several failures and has reached the end of its useful life and needs replacement. Five bids were received on October 16th, 2019, ranging from 1.1 to 1.5 million dollars. The low bid D and D Pipelines of San Es and Samo, California, has been business since 1999 and has received references for work performed for other public agencies and were determined to be satisfactory. If the contract is awarded, construction is anticipated to start in December 2019 and be substantially complete in April 2020. The total construction cost estimate is 1.376 million dollars, and it includes a 10% contingency, 5% contract construction administration, and a 5% pavement inspection cost. Additional appropriation from a $46,000 above the $1.33 million construction budget previously approved in the fiscal 2020 capital improvement program. Budget update is required to fully fund this project. This action will fully transfer $46,000 available funds from the water fund, street resurfacing water mains project, to fully fund this one. Staff is available to answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Yip. Any questions?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Di Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Ms. Sylvester?
Aye.
Mr. Bueno Ventura?
Aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Yip.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to public appearances or communications, I don't have any speaker cards. Is that right, Mary Ann? Okay. Let me go on to appointments, any board commission or committee appointments? Hearing none, let me go on to council committee reports. Under subdivision A, city council meetings, October 28th to November 11th. Any reports? Hearing none, let me go, all right, go ahead.
These are meetings, right?
Yes.
Yes. On the 20, on November 12, November 5th, a new committee was discussed, actually, this has been on the mind of Councilmember Manalo, has been waiting and has finally come to fruition, or is coming to fruition. And I'd like to thank Ms. Malp, our city manager, for having this on her chart, and she doesn't forget anything, and, and it surprises me, and when it comes up. But anyway, we have a new economic development person to assist with the director of economic development. And this is something to, that we've always wanted for quite some time, and it's excellent. Mr. Phipps?
Yes.
And we're looking to establishing a new ad hoc committee called the Small Business Committee, to which we are, and I'm sure Councilmember Manalo will add to this, but there's certain parts in giving them a charge or an order as to what we would like and who will participate, how they'll be appointed, requirements, and we're still working on all of that, but the whole idea is to bring about awareness for more economic development in Daly City. And so we had a meeting on that, and we're waiting to get more information. Councilmember Manalo, did you want to add anything else?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It was initial, and thank you for creating the ad hoc committee, Mayor Bueno Ventura, really around the premise of establishing a small business commission and supporting our small businesses here in Daly City, and also spurring our economic development that I feel has so much potential and we have not really been able to tap into. And so it's exciting that we finally have a economic development specialist onboard so that we can start this commission and be able to support our small businesses. There's already been some analysis on what small businesses we have within the city, but I think furthering and ensuring that we retain the small businesses we have and also have tools to invite other businesses to come into Daly City. So, we'll keep everyone apprised and glad to have Vice Mayor on the committee with me.
Ah, pleasure, thank you.
Any other committee meetings? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to leave the ledger?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So, this evening, the mayor and myself met with the Daly City Public Library Association in regards to looking at the possibility of obtaining monies for capital improvements, and Mr. Chu is their city manager and, as well as staff, and how we can find that money, get that money to make sure that we can at least be able to get some of the money, hopefully from our assembly member, to, for certain upgrades. It has to be a project-ready agreement to be able to do that, so our first focus will probably be ceremony, and then we're going to get together and think about long-term goals as far as looking at all our libraries. Where can we make the most impact? Probably even when we go over our budget in January the 11th, that will be a particular part of it, where we can see maybe there might be a need, where we can open up a couple of the libraries extra days and obtain monies to hire more staff, so that we can actually make our, our neighborhoods and our city thrive, and our children will have access, our seniors, that way everybody can have access. So, there's different ways, angles to look at it. So, that's just the beginning of the meetings. We're already setting something up, another meeting as a follow-up before the end of the year, so that we can make sure that we can start obtaining the money and get made possible feasibility study as well for the future. That's it, thank you, sir.
Any other meetings? Comments? Okay, hearing none, let me go to city council reports. Any city council reports? Hearing none?
One.
All of our events.
Well, for city council reports, we all attended, Councilwoman Di Giovanni, Councilwoman Justin Manalo, and myself, we attended the Daly City Stay Strong Health Fair, sponsored by David Canapa, at Ceramone Mall, I think it was a, a pretty great turnout at the mall. We had different community-based organizations, community vendors, I believe there was like more than 70 vendors there, ranging from mental health to talking about insurance to people doing CPR and all that. Would you like to add anything else?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Rod, for that. I think it was really great to see all the services, and one of the presentations was extremely useful around identifying stroke.
Oh, yeah.
And I, you know, in our communities, and really, like, understanding what you have to look for. So, these kind of educational presentations are important for our community. I did mention for the presenter to have Tagalog in the future, that the language didn't have Tagalog in. Tagalog in their flyers, but they had languages in Latino, I think Chinese, but because there's a high population of Filipino-Americans in Daly City. But it was also around urgent needs or emergency needs, how to ensure if you were to get a wound, like what are the first aid needs right then? I mean, I was sitting down and we were in the separate ceremonies, but we sat in the audience, and I learned a lot. And so we can continue to share. I tried to share that on my Facebook page, but I'll keep trying. But these are informational tips around just health that sometimes like are so simple, but also just life-saving. And then also was able to see the organizers with the Filipino Mental Health Initiative, which at this point, you know, they are looking at a proposal to bring in really an opportunity for youth to have a social enterprise, but with services that provide support services around mental health. So it's great to see that there's going to be something for our young people in the future, just to have a safe space and also be able to express themselves and get connected to mental health resources if need be.
Great. Go ahead.
We also, some of us attended the Pacific Islanders Together, cops, kids, and cars. Did I get it all right? We're our Daly City Police Department and our Daly City firefighters, vendors, all kinds of car clubs. And our great PIT and Jefferson were out there. It was a great day. The sun did come out. It was like a barbecue and a lot of fun. So that was fun. And then I guess I'll let the mayor speak on the moving event of the POW MIA flag. I'll let him speak on it since he was there because we also did that on Veterans Day. And so if he would like to speak on that, that'd be great. And then we were there as well with Congressman Speer.
I'll have the Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stephen, if you could kindly cue up the video. I'm about to show everyone a one-minute, four-second video on something that transpired here in Daly City approximately two and a half years ago. I am bringing this up for two reasons. One is for awareness, and number two, for an event that where Daly City was recognized today.
Look at honey, look at honey, look at honey, lick, 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 lick. Lick it. You don't want me to talk filthy? Come on, come on, come on. Look at all the groceries they buy. Still our food, still our money, our jobs.
So racist. Oh, my God.
Got a family to feed.
For what? Go back to your country. You lie. You lie. You lie, just like you got here.
You have the right to refuse service, right?
Take our food, take our jobs.
I think you should.
And then they say, oh, you're crazy. Oh, we're all looking for the dream. Well, screw our dream.
I think she needs to know who's coming.
Thank you very much. I did that to remind everyone and to bring about awareness. This event happened under the watch of then-Mayor Justlyn Manalo. And when she saw this, she immediately took action and developed something that we have recently redone a couple of weeks ago, and that's Love Not Hate. If you didn't attend, you should have. But I say all of that to say this. Today, I had the opportunity, along with the cities of Millbrae and Redwood City, to attend the Board of Supervisors meeting in Redwood City, to which Daly City received a proclamation through the idea of Mayor Wayne Lee of Millbrae for United Against Hate Week. I'd like to thank then-Mayor Justlyn Manalo for her efforts and her thoughts because when I was there today, they asked, what is Daly City doing? And I proudly advised them. So being one of the largest cities in San Mateo County, this is something we won't tolerate. I made mention that when you have hate, it gets violence. And so here in Daly City, we won't tolerate that. So I'd like to thank Councilmember Manalo and the rest of the council members at the time for moving with her idea for Love Not Hate. I showed them the T-shirt, and when I flipped it over and showed them the different colors because we had members of LGBTQ who was there who received a different award. And the whole idea is to bring about awareness. So with that being said, here's a proclamation from the Board of Supervisors, and I'll provide that to our city manager, Ms. Zimmerman. Thank you. And, oh, the other city was Burlingame. And so Burlingame is also having an event, United Against Hate, and it's a community potluck. And they were talking about, the mayor of Burlingame says she's going to be cooking, and most of it's going to be vegan. But that's on Thursday, November 21st, 6:00 to 8:00 at the Burlingame Library. So if I can have our city manager perhaps post this on our website for awareness for the public. All right? And Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. It was tough getting up and being down there by 9:00 o'clock, and it was tough. But thank you so much, and that's all I have.
So thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Let me also, under, okay, let's go on to city council reports. Let me say that one of our, so Commissioners Perla Beriantos's husband, Meg, he had to go, he had surgery this past Friday. He's apparently doing well, but it was quite a serious surgery. He's in the hospital now. And maybe I can ask Pristine Fuller to give a little update because I know she went and visited him today.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, city council staff members. According to Tita Perla, he's going to be transferred to a rehabilitation center to get the proper care he needs at this time. It was against the advisement of the physicians. And her children, they all made a cognitive decision to do the right thing. He will be at the Davies campus, presumably. I don't technically have the room number, but maybe one of you can call Tita Perla and find out the room number. But as effective of 3:00 this afternoon, it was very clear that the case manager was going to come in and, you know, explain. And Glenn is very well-versed, her son. He's the head of the county director as a nurse. He's a nurse director. So he's very well-versed in these rehabs. I know we all, you know, me too. I was very leery when my mom had to go to a rehab. We all have that learyness, but that's the only update that I have.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we wish him speedy recovery, and thank you all for those who have stopped by or said some things to them. Perla really appreciates it. Yeah, so let's go on to staff reports, unless anybody has any other city council reports? No? Staff reports?
Just really quickly, I know we haven't gotten through Thanksgiving yet, but since we're sort of in this mode of love and acceptance, I would like to remind everybody that there is our first-ever community tree lighting, and that's going to be Wednesday, December 11th, here at 5:00 from 5:00 to 6:30. Our Parks Department planted, it's so much better than the Charlie Brown Christmas tree, but they planted a tree out front, and it's thriving. I think they planted it about seven months ago. So please be there if you can.
Good. Thank you. All right. Now we have adjourned memories.
I just would like to thank the city manager publicly because I remember from the beginning, she moved immediately when I was asking at the public forum about doing one for the employees. They moved quickly. HR did a great job. And I asked if we could do one for the community, and she says, maybe next year. And she didn't even hesitate, and she already started moving with Leilani. And I remember she was, Leilani last week was looking for the date as well. So thank you as well, Leilani, because I know that you were listening as well about the one and when you were at HR and how you guys did the little cooking or the little bake-off and stuff. So hopefully, we're going to be able to do that again, and it's great for the community. So thank you, guys, for listening. Thank you.
Okay. Now let's go on to adjourned memory. Let me start off with Ms. Di Giovanni. Go ahead.
Yes. It gives me great sadness that the husband of Susan Rojas passed peacefully on November the 7th, 2019. His name was Dominic Rojas. He was a good and humorous individual and an active member of the Ceremony Homeowners Association. His three children are Reggie, Bobby, and Rosalie, and he also had six grandchildren. So it is real sadness because he always had something positive to say in his life. I know this is quickly because I didn't know the county. I think it was El Dorado County Sheriff that was killed in action, and we did not mention his name the last time. But I believe he was a sheriff as well, and for our veterans to remember all of them tonight as we adjourn. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is great sadness I have to report the passing of my wife's mother. She was born on January 19th in Rosales Fungasinan in the Philippines. She met her future husband, who later on became the mayor of Fungasinan. And later on, in 1974, now, did you notice I didn't give you the year? But I said in 1974, she immigrated here to the United States. She has survived, and when you hear these numbers, you're still going to wonder the year. She has survived by 23 grandchildren and 25 great-grandchildren. So when you hear that second number, you say, okay, so you're thinking, wow. Anyway, she was born in 1921, and she passed at the age of 98 years old and had all of her faculties. So with that being said, I wish to make that acknowledgement, and I thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. May she rest in peace. Any other adjournment memories? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.